Ready to drop. Good. Okay, we'll call this meeting over. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Then moved and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have both same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to informational items, iReady mid-year growth report.
All right, I'm trying to get to my board, my board agenda as well. So I have put in there, it's just a growth report. There's a lot of reporting that you can get out of iReady with so many different things. It, it's, I just, in the end, I decided to go with the plain and simple growth report.
Do you need a lap? Do you need a?
Uh, device?
Device.
Yeah.
I was sorry, I was trying to get, trying to get on my phone here. Well, I was trying not to interrupt, but yeah. All of our meetings start.
I don't even see it on.
Next week.
Not on the agenda.
Not on the.
But it was last week.
It's next week, I think, but I think, yeah, all six. So. You can't. I'll wait till you guys can. I mean, we also could put it up. We could also share it on the screen. That helps too. Uh, but it is, um, they, there's a report for each of the schools. And it's kind of similar to what we looked at before for ARC. Whereas the first row is where we started the beginning of the year, the second row, uh, or the, I'm sorry, it's opposite on this. Fall is at the bottom, winter is where we are now. So they would have taken the test in September and then they just finished up. Um, like in last part of January, early part of February. Um, kindergarteners do not take the fall test. Uh, some teachers choose to give it to them, but kindergarteners aren't ready to come in and take a computer test. So you don't see kindergarteners on here. So the first page is Keen River View. Um, and you can see for their first graders, they started out with thirteen percent in the green, which would be on grade level. And right now they're at thirty-one percent. And you can also see their red has been reduced quite a bit. And then second grade has some similar growth. Some, some growth, but al- also has increased their green, reduced their red, but still quite a few more kids in red there. That's in reading. And we've done some comparison reporting. The middle school's done quite a bit of work with it, the elementary's too, and the iReady reports, the iReady assessment is pretty, pretty predictive of kids, um, and it's pretty comparable to what we see out of ARC. So, um, you know, we could choose down the road not to use iReady. We have to have a reporting system, but iReady does provide some assessment standards, mastery assessments, where they could, like on a student, if they're working towards a particular standard, they could give an assessment to see if the student has met that standard. There's some, some, some different things that iReady can do. There's, um, also individualized assignments based on how the student is performing. They can give them their particular skill that they need to learn. They could assign that to the student. Um, so there's definitely some advantages to iReady. It is expensive, but, um, it does have a lot of features. You can see with math, overall math is a bigger challenge for us, but also the first grade has reduced their red by quite a bit and increased their green. Um, the yellow is always those students. It's a huge amount of yellow in first grade. Seventy-four percent of those, but those are the kids that you may, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, they've tipped a lot of those over to green. So they're approaching standard, but they're, they're not there yet.
Deanna, is it the expectation that we want our kids at green by the end of the year?
Ultimately, that is correct, and that's the way the test is, is staged. So when you see kids that are in red, they're pretty far from being at standard so that it would be challenging. There's a whole nother report actually in iReady that shows is predicts the possibility of kids getting to green by the end of the year based on where they are now and how they're progressing. Um, that's one of like zillions of reports, and it's one I had never seen until we did a, just did a training with iReady last week, and I was like, oh, wow. So like when you get down to, oh, I'll talk about it when I get down to the eighth grade, um, it was very interesting. So there's some other ways to see it. But yes, it's the end of the year standard that they're testing them at. So.
Yeah, I think that's really important to notice that.
It is.
So if you think about it, if you're at standard in September, at the end of your standard in second grade, right? Then what are we doing to challenge those green students in September so that they're at green or better in May?
So there is another view of the same report. It's a five level and it should, but it is kind of complicated matter. So, so it shows like super red and super green kind of. So it shows out of like, if I look at the heights report in third grade right now, forty-five percent of our kids were, um, are at on, on pace to be at standard in third grade for reading. Um, but it would show in that percentage, there's a section that are very ha- much higher performing. And so there is a different report where you can see that, but I, this was, this one, I felt like maybe like it gets, can get a little bit complicated. Some of it gets a little hard to read. Um, there's that piece. Um, so it's kind of the same with, a little bit the same with ARC. So when we looked at the ARC assessments, when you look at a grade like a student that's in first grade or second grade, they have multiple targets during the year. It changes like three times. So they might be on gray level right now in September, October, but when that target switches, say in November, the, all of a sudden they're not. Whereas once you get past into past white, or like in that fourth, fifth, sixth grade, those are a year-long target. So if they're showing green at the beginning of the year, they're going to be green at the end of the year. If they're, they're working, the target is an end of the year. It's a much bigger goal than whereas in, when you're looking in those kindergarten, first, second, you're working on foundational skills. So the targets are much smaller and broken up more than they are when they're older. And they're reading, there's, it's kind of a bigger standard that they're working on than some of those foundational pieces. There's also reports in iReady that talk about that show foundational, like where students are with foundational skills in reading. Um, I don't know. I, if you ever want to see some of them, we can, I just have to be careful. I don't want to do, to do it live. Because if I click to the wrong place, you see a teacher's name, you see a kid's name, you see something like that. But I'd be happy if you wanted to come and say with me, I could show you some of the other, some of the other views. And it might be something kind of cool to do at the end of the year, maybe in the summer, if you have a time, because then you can kind of see how it went for the year. Um, you can see in the heights, also the same thing. Their fourth grade or their third grade has, um, been doing really well with reading. Great, great growth. You can also see they came in with fifty-two percent of their kids red in the fall, uh, or well below standard. So they've, um, reduced that quite a bit and increased their on-grade level a lot in reading. Not quite, a lot of reduction in red in fourth grade, not quite as much, um, expansion of the green, but it is growing. And then fifth grade is, looks to be having some pretty significant challenges. But these fifth graders now reflecting back are the kids that missed foundational reading in first grade because of COVID. So they've been struggling like those two grade levels, fourth and fifth grade, because they weren't in school. So that's been a catch up for a long time.
If we track them through graduation, I'm going to predict we're going to see struggles in their test scores the whole way. Um, if you think about it, if you, if, I'm going to use myself as a parent. I was a working mom. Um, my kids were home with whomever, grandma, babysitter, whoever, supposedly working on their reading skills. I say, did you read your book? Yes, I read their book. Did you do whatever? Once I, I read with them when they went to bed, they read a little, you know what I mean? In first grade. I'm not, I, you know, at, at that point in my life, I was not a teacher, you know, I mean, I, I would have, I don't think my students would have got the type of education had they gone to first grade in a school system. And then they're always going to struggle with that lean. Now, kids can catch up, but I think if we watch them, we'll see more struggles until they graduate.
Also, I think too, like, there's a lot of times parents like they, because they maybe don't know, like, they're like, go and read your book. They go read their book.
That's what I would say. That's what I would do.
Yeah, but they go read your book. When you didn't think that there, I was actually having a conversation with a principal a couple of weeks ago, like, parents like, of course my student can read. And they're like, no, you're, he was like, the student, the parent was so sure that the child was reading the book, they were going and sitting down and got. But, but they're not. So, um, it is like even five minutes, just, just read these two pages for me or something. If parents, if parents are, happen to be listening, just checking in, if you can read it, spend, have time to read aloud. And if parents get home, they've got to make dinner. I know how my life was as a working mom too. You got home from school, you got home from school. A lot of times I was coaching, got home from coaching, you're just making dinner and trying to get everything ready so you can go to school the next day. And in the meantime, you're like at the table hoping they're getting everything done. So it, it's challenging. Um, you can see for math, there's been some growth, but math is, as we've seen on our state scores and other scores, math starts out from a lower level, but you can see those third graders, seven percent more proficient in math at the beginning of the year. One thing, the buildings are doing a really good job, but we are seeing growth. We have seen over the years sometimes with iReady where we're not seeing growth, and it's not because kids aren't learning. It's because kids are disregarding the test. Middle school did a lot of work around goal setting with, uh, iReady this year, and, and we'll talk about that. Witstrand, um, their population tends to have more challenges, um, uh, to start out. Uh, but they're working really hard to increase their green and reduce the red. And you can see they start out in, in first grade, and that's growing as you go on. But still a lot, they have a lot of challenges, students, you know, that, that they're really working on to learn to read and to do math. And it just depends on the grade, but you can see with math, where their third graders this fall, also a much smaller number of kids, you're talking in, you know, thirty to thirty-six total kids out there. Their third graders where they started out, at least on the test, showing none of the word standard. They have some at standard now, and they significantly reduced the red in the third grade, but continuing to see some challenges. In the middle school. So you look at the middle school's results and, um, they too, I mean, they're, they're working on ma- I, I spent, just spent like two or three hours with the middle school the other day, working really hard to figure out a schedule where they can get more time for reading. They need more time to be able to provide the intervention of our curriculum, not just the core part.
So we're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five.
Mr. Manio said like he needs more time, so we're working on, we got to figure that out. It's going to be a little staffing issue, but it's also, it's a, it's going to be a challenge because if you have to double the amount of time you're giving ELA, you need more teachers. Uh, or they have to come from somewhere else. So, um, I'm working on that with them because they're doing a good job with Core. They are seeing growth in their kids, but it's just slower. As they're not able to provide the intervention at, on the regular basis like the other buildings. And the same thing in math. The funny thing though about, so that predictability report, so I let you look at the results and go, gosh, those, their predictability for eighth grade for kids getting to standard was sixty-one percent. Based on how they're growing now. Their proficiency doesn't look high, but they are growing. So I'll be really interested. They, like I said, kids will go, oh, that does doesn't matter. They don't, you know, they just click. C, 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 they, they told me C was going to be their right answer at least half the time. So they're really working hard on the goal setting, kids understanding the, 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 the number, what it means. And actually, a lot of that has been driven, Wendy Rodriguez really took that project on. She's their instructional coach and really did a lot of the legwork for the building. And kids, kid, they used, they actually even, that's interesting. So dairy, after COVID, because of mental health and everything, used to be when you finished the iReady test, this number popped up and it told you what your score was. So you could start and go, oh, I know I got a two forty-seven. I'm going to work on this. And then your score pops up. I got a two thirty-two because of kids, they, iReady as a blanket turned it off. They turned it off because of kids, mental health, they knew there were struggles, COVID and all of that. So the other day when we were in the meeting, um, with listening and learning about some of these, the new reports and some of the new features, Michael Denny said, you know, we used to be when our kids took the test, then score popped up at the end, so kids could see how they did. And they said, oh, we turned that off during COVID. We can turn that back on for you. So the kid would see like, oh, I got that, I got a two fifty-two, I grew. And so, because they were focused on their scores and knew what their scores were. So, um, this was a, so that was a good reason, like turn it back on. They instant gratification of seeing how they did, or hopefully did improve. And they had a lot of kids improve. Maybe not as much growth as they hoped for, but their kids are, are improving. This doesn't, isn't necessarily the report that shows that. Because they may be growing, but not getting too proficient yet. They may be in yellow and have grown a lot, but didn't get to green. So it was just interesting. Sixty-one percent of their kids were predicted to meet their regular growth goal, and I can't remember the percentage for stretch. So they do a, uh, annual growth prediction and a stretch growth, because we don't get kids in stretch growth, they don't catch up. So we need stretch growth. We, annual growth is you grow a year for a year. We can't get a red kid to grade level if they're only growing a year for a year. So that, that's iReady. If you want to know more, um, the high school currently is not using the iReady test. Uh, because they wanted to use a, a different version with some standards assessments that, that comes with SBA. They've made significant changes to the iReady. They, so there's the test and the test is a test, but some of the instructional pieces that go with it looked very L, childlike, because the iReady intervention pieces only go to eighth grade. So if you're a high school student and you are functioning at a fifth or sixth grade level, your stuff looks like you're a fifth or sixth grader. And so with appeal, the way the kids felt about it, so they are making, doing a whole revision and called, doing something called iReady Pro. So we could use it. I, I sent that information to Brian and David. So, because it's been something that the kids kind of rebelled against because they didn't, they felt like they were being treated like babies. So now that's changing. Um, so I think that it'll be something that we would maybe go back to using with our high school students as well to track their.
Do the, uh, the individual growth reports go to the parents?
So the buildings need to talk about how they do that, but they print, um, there are several different types of reports, and that's the building's choice of how they do that. So obviously we don't have any principles, but that their iReady, all their assessment growth goes to parents either at conferences. Um, sometimes they can do as well, but we'd have to ask them because I, I couldn't tell you which reports they're sending to parents. That's a good question. I get that information.
We can make some notes on that and get that too, because I think that is important for those listening and for those that, how do they, how does the information go home to parents?
There is just like a growth report that shows that they can print and send out to parents. Now, for it to be color and look nice, I have to do it through my office and nobody's asking for that. So, but they probably can also do it as a PDF or they touch.
I have my son's just got yesterday from, oh, via email. So you don't necessarily have to.
Nope, no, it doesn't have to be at all. They actually, some of the buildings too are doing, um, have decided to do like a, um, not a really, a, a, really so much of proficiency, but a growth, a growth, like, uh, like, like recognize kids for growth, um, to like, it's sort of like, oh, these kids grew, like the, Wendy called it something. I don't remember what she called it, but like top ten growth or something, plus recognizing kids for growing and improving is all part of their plan that they're working on. So, yeah.
Um, I had one question, I think.
Yep.
It was in, uh, you mentioned, was mentioned earlier that the, was it the fourth and fifth graders or the third and fourth that were right during the shutdown?
Um.
I think it was.
Four and.
Four and five.
Five.
Yeah, four and five now.
Um, and I don't know what the answer is, or e- even if you could provide an answer, but if they are going to be behind from now until they graduate, what kind of things can we implement to catch those kids back up and try to fill in that gap that they missed that first year?
It's actually the curriculum that we're doing is one of the things, because what it does is, because there's like, sometimes kids will like have holes, like you might listen to a kid read. And they're reading, but like every time a word has an ending like ED or IG, they don't read it. My son did that when he was younger. I'm like, you're not, you're like, you have to read the end of the word. I, I read it. Like, for whatever reason, he did not recognize or did not read that. So there are certain things, like whether it be in how they learn their, their foundational skills coming up through their phonics or their phonemes or their, that they have missed. And that's the really cool thing about ARC is it identifies skill, not reading level. Because you and I might be the same reading level, but we might have a different skill we're missing. And that's where we're seeing growth. Kids that are doing the, um, toolkits, the kids that are in red, that are do, also doing reading intervention if they need, um, well, all of our kids are doing in K five, we're doing OG if they're in intervention. So that's a catch up, like big, get their, other Orton Gillingham focuses on those foundational skills that they missed. Rhyming words, things where they, you know, give them a beginning of a word and they add an ending, or they give them at and what sound can you put in the front, cat, bat. It's, it's, I don't have that flexibility in their brains and their reading because they missed that skill somewhere along the road. So that really is it. Ultimately, we're running like, so right now we have ninety minutes of reading in elementary and, and if not more, sometimes it's more when the addition of writing. And then they have intervention periods of between twenty and forty-five minutes, depending on which building has those. Like some of the buildings are keeping the kids for twenty minutes and doing like iReady and then flipping them, but they're in core, all in core. So there's been changes. It's like, like our, our kids that are identified in reading for special education. A few years ago, they only went, they went to special education during all their reading time. You are never going to catch up if you're not exposed to Core. So you go into special, the idea between special education truly is you go in, you get support and intervention so you can get out. But most kids never get out. So now our kids, they cannot miss Core. They, they are in Core, and then their, their intervention or plus time might be in special education. It might be an intervention, like intervention program. But they don't miss Core. We cannot ever expect a kid who's a sixth grader that's been in special education for six, six years in, only in resource room, never exposed to Core to ever get to grade level. It's not going to happen. So that's been a big change that we've made. Um, we have kids also now in the inclusion model that are identified, like for instance on IP. But they are in, in inclusion classroom. They're not pulled out for special education and they get the support in the classroom. So they're in their core all the time. So right now the biggest growth we see out of kids, the acceleration comes from kids that are in Core. They get toolkits and they get OG. Those three pieces are the kids that are growing the fastest. But OG is one to three kids at a time, max four. We have two interventionists at River View. We have two intervene, reading interventionists at Heights. We have two halves at Witstrand. Now, we do have the bilingual interventionist too, that's doing the same work, but in the Spanish side for our kids that are adult. But it's not enough people, but it's all we can afford.
What about like enrichment in the summer for kids to get that catch up?
So really, um, we have done some of that in the past. It's very challenging because there is a max of kids work, like work time. And when you have to do that in sex, such a small group. So if I'm going to continue to do my OG with you, that oh, true, really intensive one-on-one, really it's one-on-one, one-on-two. We have a few groups that we're able to do up to four for kids that are closer to exiting. They got to come for, for twenty-five minutes and go home. So how do you make that work? And we've done it when we've won a, a regular summer school and kids have, we've added that intervention piece in. But it's also not mandatory. It also can't.
And the, so this is.
So we get some kids, but.
This is where balanced calendar discussion starts. This is where the cost of summer school comes into play. Um, inter, um, intercession weeks and balanced calendar. This is where it really is relooking at the prototypical school model, how we run school, is it needing to adjust? So, um, one of the best trainings I ever went to, and, and it's not really about balanced calendar, everybody, it's not, it's about instruction. But one of the best meetings that I sat in was this statement from one of the professors. A student who is successful in school in a hundred and eighty days is going to be in successful in school in a hundred and eighty days, no matter what hundred and eighty days it is. Or might even be successful in a hundred and fifty days. But a student who's not successful in a hundred and eighty days can't be successful in a hundred and eighty days, no matter what hundred and eighty days it is. So if you need to give them five extra days every trimester to fill that gap that you're talking about, and the other student can be successful in a hundred and sixty or a hundred and sixty-five, if you did three, five, three, five day intercessions, that hundred and eighty days, the traditional students is going to be successful anyhow. So why not give those intervention tools in intercession weeks for the students who need them? So the traditional class that's, let's just use thirty, and I know it's not always thirty, but let's just say that, or twenty-five. Now, of that twenty-five, now that intercession week has eight kids in it. Or ten or whatever, right? But then you've got the kids there that need that specific OG work or math work or whatever it is for those five days. And if you walk in, look at how much we can do, the safety meeting tonight, how much can we do when we have ten people focused on the work? We can accomplish a lot versus thirty and I have to surf, teach this student and this student.
Because, you know, we're also have the, the challenge when we're, of working with students is we have kids that need to catch up. We also have kids that just need more time to get through and understand the same, that the concepts or to learn the skills, that's okay. Everybody's different. Ever, you, you probably remember like, you know, when you're growing up, there were things that like, you maybe just got like this and there's things like, like, my best friend totally got that and I didn't get that, like, what's going on? So some kids just need more time. And that's what those intercession ideas, some, some of the small districts run like four days and Fridays, they're inner, like an intervention day. Every Friday they do something to, for students. And so you can spend some of your program money and your support money in that way. You still can have it during the school day, but then there's the extra, it's like extra and then extra boost on this day or during these two weeks or during whatever that intercession is. So. There's a lot of structures out there, but it also, I mean, there's just, there's so many pieces to the puzzle, but.
Is there any, kind of back to that balanced schedule? I mean, looking at some of these test scores, I mean, there's some pretty big jumps from
In some grades.
From fall to winter. I mean, is, is it, do we, or do you guys think any of that is just because of retention over the summer? So then once they.
Definitely an issue.
Get back into.
They call it the summer slide.
Yeah. Um, I actually tried to run a report that showed the end of last year and the beginning of this year, and, and I already won't, didn't run the report. Um, but there definitely is summer slide. The, that's where the whole balance calendar came from. That window of summer slide is six, they say is six weeks. Like you're good with a six week break before kids start forgetting. Because the other issue is if I just finished teaching, uh, linear equations, and that's the end of my year. Then do I got to start the beginning of the next year of math, re-teaching that because we had three months off and they don't remember. So I spend the first six weeks of the, instead of being able to go further, like, maybe I just need a little bit of a refresher for a few days and then I can start on the next talk. You know, we can go in the next concept, but teachers do spend a lot of, especially math, like refresher time. And if kids go home in the summer and they don't read, I'll tell you what, I was in the library today because I was in process or leadership today. Our library is so cool. That library is so cool. Like you can get a library card on your phone in like one minute and getting our families down there and kids reading and reading books. But I'll tell you, that is one thing ARC has done for our kids. Are reading and they are liking reading and they, it's been a struggle the last several years. So that's one of the keys, getting kids reading. And it doesn't matter if your kid's a kindergartner or a tenth grader, oh, have them read something to you. About something they learned or, you know, just read something out of your history book. Tell me what you're learning, just to listen to them, to see, maybe they need some help, you know? And you can help them, spend some time with them.
So there'll be, there'll, there'll be one more report for the.
There's another one in June, and maybe then I'll run some different types of reports. It becomes kind of voluminous a little bit, you know, and maybe not so meaningful sometimes when you're looking at it that way. So, um, I, I'm gonna, uh, we'll find, I'll find some, I can do this again, but I'll find some other things that might be interesting.
Can we get an ARC report?
Oh, yeah. At the end of the year too. And all those, like June, because we do all those like May. And all those like June, cause we do all those like May, so it'll be like I ended June, cause it takes some time to kind of for me to compile all of that, but yeah.
Any other questions?
Protocol here, I was just um I noticed that our avid kids aren't on the agenda for this week.
And you thought they were gonna be.
And next week before the try in. Not a big deal, if we can't squeeze them in tonight, then we'll just kind of bag it and I just wanna know.
So you have kids already coming or they're already here?
I've had it on my schedule for a long time and then I might have to talk weeks ago.
We're sorry.
Okay, I mean, if if tonight won't work, then they'll just get a free pass and.
How many do you have tonight?
We have either six or seven. So it's okay, I I don't expect any, but I just wanted to make sure.
The biggest issue is around at the end, the agenda was posted.
Sure, okay.
But I it's up to you.
Can we change the agenda for?
I think we can amend it and it's not set set of voting item. Right, so I think it's there's like a motion to amend to allow an avid presentation. I don't, I think the rules would allow that and I don't see it as a controversial. It will be quick, they are, they're ready and they're.
I'm good with that, if we want to amend the motion, amend the agenda.
Move to amend the agenda as presented to include. Avid students as item informational item two.
Yes.
Are they gonna be here?
I told him to be here by quarter tail, so he should be here.
Well, you can skip that and move into discussion.
Thank you.
Um do I hear a second? Then moved in second to amend the agenda to include avid discussion. Under informational items number two, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose same sign, motion carries. I'm sorry about that, oh, and given the time, we'll move on to. Uh we'll come back to them and go right to discussion item, procedure forty forty, public records request.
So um I've been tasked s- since I've been brought on to start going through every single one of the procedures. Or excuse me, policies and so started the basics and go forward and um we had, we found this public records request that has a wrong name on it. Quite simple, it's just um so it'll come to you next week for first approval. And it's really as simple as you see here.
And I think we can do first and final, right?
I think we can on something simple like this. So I don't know that there's really any discussion needed on this one, I just wanna talk with you and share with you what's there.
Any other questions on that? Okay, we'll move on to policy and procedure one, 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 six, student representatives to the board of directors.
So one of the things I'll have to say when we, when I looked at these and pulled this up. We tried to provide you the red line, but it's difficult to read the red line and really know what's gonna look like. Um so the one sixteen F red line is there, but the one sixteen policy is not there and I don't know if she just clicked on the different ones. So do you have one sixteen in red?
This one?
One six, oh yeah, oh you did. Kind of having an issue like you, Michelle, I my one sixteen, so let's just talk about that. So I was asked, we're gonna getting ready, I met with the students, we're getting ready to hold student on board reps. And it was asked to be reviewed, so they're here for you, um there isn't a lot of changes, we did update the um. Application. To do a GPA required instead of recommended. We added a of on the form on one sixteen, I think it's supposed to be a P, not an F, by the way, one sixteen. And then there is an F for the form, but there's a procedures and F for the form, the form um has a place for absences and discipline. We think those are appropriate in the application process, what um? So let me just go back to the form, so I'm I would really like you to truly look over them and um. Kind of look through that and then we're gonna also work on, I think they should also um submit a resume.
Said in here a few times, two student representatives, but we've had three, well.
We've had more than that.
Yes, and so, right, and so I think what we've talked about was if. I am opening it up for discussion, that's why this is a discussion two, we talked about two. Um in our student board meeting last week, um do you say like one junior, one senior so that you always have. Now you the you have to reapply each year, but the junior then could reapply so be it that they want and then you'd have one with a little more experience than somebody you're training. Um I don't, I I really want it to be your voice and what you would like, I just think we need to have a clearer. Application process with a little more um. And we talked about it, what Noah was there, so what were we talking about, we just talked about that, let's have some clearer expectation.
Yeah, it it needs to be more clear, not just uh you show up and you sit here for an hour and a half and twiddle your thumbs like I do every Wednesday.
But we talked about in the meetings that we're holding, we talked about.
Um we wanted people that are really engaged and like actually want to do the job, not just have the title, I guess. Um and.
Oh, and we want, we I'm gonna interrupt you because we were, we did talk about this. We would like to see five or six people and take the two best people, then five people play and all five sit on the board. Does that make sense like? It like a job application or like a running for school board, right, you're elected and you're chosen rather than you get the job out of default. That right?
Um and then we like internally after that, we were discussing and we thought that the idea of two was actually a really good idea because we ran out of things to talk about. Two people talk and the last person will have nothing to say or vice versa. And so we've thought that two would make things a little bit easier um to actually make it seem like everyone's con- contributing.
So as as we sit like it seems like somebody like kind of hit up sports and is that kind of. Predetermined by you guys at the beginning of the year, is it just kind of?
We we had a brief discussion about it and um it was just kind of. I guess if that's what you wanna cover, that's what you cover, um we've expanded to like having meetings with the middle school, so um. Once those become more regular, um someone will start highlighting that, um it's just. Like there there was no real, this is your job, it's just kind of, here you go, figure it out. So it was, we kind of made that up on our own, I guess.
And so we're hoping to be able to give some more guidance if we have a little bit, well, better written, I know it's better written, written differently. A policy and procedure for the that and then um I think we can do a better job onboarding. With everything from a binder and notebook and policies and right like protocols and explanation and. How they address the board, how they dress the public and all of those.
Cause I I know that personally compared to last year, this year with actually a sit down meet with you, you gave us the nice folder that has all the laws to policies and everything. It was so much easier, like. We kind of figured it out as we went last year, but there was some actual, this is your starting point, go from here, so I wanna thank you for that, that was amazing, um. But yeah, I really preferred that old the, well, happened last year, which, here you go.
No, I'd have to say that, you know, over the last couple of years, I think this has probably been our, it seems to be the most well functioning. Uh group of student board reps, you know. Not like you said, just to sit here and twiddle your thumbs or cup, try to come up with something to say, but being an active part of taking. Stuff from here and uh you know, going into the schools or vice versa, so. Um yeah, we'll continue to get better and I appreciate all that input.
We had, we had in at our last meeting with the one of the middle, with the middle school, was it, is it their leadership or A S B?
A S B.
A S B, someone who was in seventh grader actually expressed interest and I was like, well, that's only four years away, I'm like, so there's a nice little training process up to there. So there was that.
Nice.
So I really welcome any email or any thoughts or anything you've got, if you see something already. Um you know what I mean, but I'm open for discussion on what your thoughts are.
So one thing, um and I really didn't think of it till you said it, but. You know, we have an onboarding for new ben- more new board members, maybe we should come up with a probably. A narrowed list, narrower list. To put into this policy or procedure, um so that. They get all the information that they need to be successful, just like we got, you know, or you guys got the information successful.
I and I think that's real simple, we can do a paragraph about onboarding in the summer prior to the start of the school year, things like that. So I can put that in there.
Activities code.
Yes, um and I probably should put that in there too. Right? Cause it is a.
Emails best for feedback?
Yes.
And when do you, when do you want it?
Well, we're gonna have our first reading next week. So I'd like any kind of feedback and then we'll note that and we'll go from there, um and. If there's something that um. Feedback that, I mean, there's formatting feedback and there's those kinds of feedback and then there's discussion type feedback. For example, we said two and some of you think it should be three, that's a discussion type feedback, so we'll do a first reading after I get the feedback next time. And then we'll probably do a second reading on this before we go, you know, this wouldn't be a real quick one, so we'll do a first reading and then I'll make the corrections and then we'll do a second and final. Don't you think?
Yeah, so the first reading will be the rough draft. And once that comes out, you know, we can tweak it, we can add things, subtract things, the second draft should be the final.
Hopefully, I do a good job.
Great, any question?
Actually, I I had one thing and I just briefly seen this the other day when I was trying to find something else, but I can't remember if it was on Wazda or if it was. A S P I, I can't remember which one, um that it stated that student representatives get a preferential vote, um. I don't know if it was a hundred percent true, but um.
So they can, um depending on the school district and how the policy is written, they can have. There was a word for it, it's not preferential, there is a word for it, they can have an advisory vote. Advisory vote on a topic that then um then the school board can consider.
And I think it says that in this policy. We just didn't follow it very well.
So that's that's something that part of our onboarding and our learning, me being new in the the system and and really getting in and understanding and reading our policies too.
And I think as the existing policy still states that, correct? Um that might be something that will need to be reminded of as we proceed. Um from here on, cause I'll forget, I I'm, I'll be honest, I'll probably forget.
Once we, it becomes habit.
Once it becomes habit, it's a big, not a big deal, but um just getting into it, I just stop me if I if I do forget. That answer? Any other questions on policy procedure eleven sixteen?
Well, I'll start and they show up and we'll all be quiet.
Okay.
So I was asked to put this on the agenda for a discussion item. Um and I was at a superintendent's meeting this morning where this bill came up. And I was with the superintendent from Kennewick and Richland at the meeting. Um and asked some questions about what the the superintendent's. Take on the house, the Senate bill was, in other words, what does it really mean, right, and what what would it could it impact? So I took the Senate bill and I gave you a highlighted copy based on some things that I'll just kind of share with you, so in the yellow. Um this new section in the yellow, we already do this. So I wanted to clarify that, that we already have this in our processes and we already have that going on. Then um for everybody at home, this is in the attachment, I'm on page one in um. Paragraph two and in section one, so the legislator legislature intends to expand, you know, so I highlighted that in dark green. So it's not a full redo as expansion. Um I've talked to you in in one-on-one sessions about inclusion, right, so that's where this word comes in again. And the historically marginalized and represented groups, and I'm gonna draw attention to that as I go down through this and kind of share with what it is. The second page. If this passes, the it will direct the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction to do this work. And it to include um all um histories, contributions, perspectives of LGBTQ people. That was important to note, going down the page where I did in dark green and number new section two. Um the model policy and procedures must require that the school board of directors will adopt inclusive curriculum. So what it's saying, and I I have Deanna here to, and we have not talked about this, so this is a discussion topic. So I'm gonna go back to remember when you didn't adopt science. So I'll give you an example, we needed to do a science adoption a couple of years ago, right? And the next generation science standards were out there and nobody had written any text on it yet. So what it, the policy in this particular one is saying is if, let's just say. Oh, I'll go back to science, I don't know, it's not a good example, but we we're just adopting science and we're reviewing three different curriculum. We have to take into consideration which one represents all marginalized population. That's what we have to take into consideration, now, the reason the next um bottom to middle part of page two where it talks about. What is marginalized populations, Native Americans? People from various racial and ethnic backgrounds and it has a big long list, women, socioeconomic statuses. Religious backgrounds, immigrants, refugees, disability, neurodiverse, English learners, sign language, right? So I'm gonna give you an example of something that came up about ten years ago when I started my principal work. They were, we, I was in a class and they had us open up these different textbooks. And so what they had us do was, and we had different nationalities and racial um ethnic backgrounds in my class. And so we opened them up and we looked through the books and they said, I want you to find people that look like you. It was really easy for me, I'm gonna be very frank here, I can find all kinds of white people in the book and then they said, find your same gender. Weren't very many women leaders talked about in my history book that we're looking at. And then we had in the science book to find a. Person of some different nationality or racial group who's represented in the science book. What they were bringing about is if you are from one of those marginalized populations, do you see yourself becoming a scientist? So that's where this foundationally came from when we talked about our superintendent's meeting today. So that's, that's where this came from, so then. Um I did do in yellow for the purpose of this inclusive means curriculum and instruction materials that create and sustain a sense of respect. So then I started looking this and I read through this, so section three of this R C W. You'll notice there's no changes in section three, notice it's not new, right? You see where it says it doesn't say new section at the top and there's very little line. Then you see some underline where there's some new word and strike through. I didn't see anything that I wanted to bring to big light in this. Now on page five, in the middle of two A. Which operates elementary schools only, I wanted to just clarify, we are a K twelve district, so this does not pertain to us. So while it's still in the in the bill, it doesn't pertain to us, cause we're, I just wanted to make sure that you understood what you were kind of looking at. Because until you've read a few of these, it's kind of overwhelming to see what's new and what's old and what's already there. Um so on page six, every board of directors unless otherwise provided law shall. Provide free textbooks, supplies and other instructional materials to be loaned to the students of the school when it is in judgment the best interest of this district. So I brought this, I wanted to bring this up, even I didn't put in color on your packet they want to talk about, this is. Providing a prom book to a student with a textbook, possibly in their language. We do almost all of those things, right, now a piece there might come in if we had a student who. Was in English as a second language learner who spoke Vietnamese maybe or something, right? So there might be some pieces that way, but we do a lot of this already, Deanna, right, all of this is.
We've had to buy special keyboards.
Keyboards and different things and we do that in our district.
So one of the things I thought in this this particular piece though was. For instance, we have an art fee at the high school for supplies, does this mean we can't charge an art fee and we need to pay for that?
So we might, we might have to read.
So that's one thing I thought.
We have to look about.
Kinds of things, and then I thought even on a broader scope, we ask kids to have paper and pencil, does that mean we have? To do that too, so I had a little bit of questions on that part right there.
So those are some things that we're doing some research on to you. Or for you or for us as a team. Um, notice that then all of there's no strike through, no changes in this part. On page ten. By December one of twenty twenty for the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. In consultation with Washington State LGBTQ Commission, must review and update relevant state learning standards. Let's talk about that. So, yes, so that means that.
They're gonna do that in five months.
I want you to know, that's just. So I think when we see the final, um. Bill, some of this, somebody's gonna do like we're saying, like, we can't get state science standards in years. Little and they wanna do this in seven months.
Well, and publishers, guess what? They pu- publishers build their curriculums based on two states. Texas and California. Biggest populated states, that's where the drive, drive comes from.
So just how we have standards in English and whatever, then they're saying we're gonna have to identify what we're going to. We're gonna have to make sure, and so notice it says. Standards at all grade levels to include the histories, contributions and perspectives. So then, um. And then there's a little bit of the model policy, so what I was told. Um, at my meeting this morning was, um. The. Original bill and you could probably got some emails on this yesterday or last night. Did you hear what happened yesterday afternoon?
I have not heard, but I assumed it passed out of the education committee, but I don't know.
But I have not heard, so I, I have not got, it's called Twio. This week in edu- in, in, we are in, in office or whatever.
I haven't, I haven't read it.
Okay, and I have not read Twio this week to know what happened in. In, oh, this week in Olympia.
For executive action, so it's going to the governor's staff.
Okay. Okay.
So it's gonna bypass a vote in the house and go right to the.
But it's already gone through the senate in the house, and then it went to the education committee.
Mm-hmm, that's how that works.
Yeah, there's a. There's a cartoon I recommend from, um, ABC.
It says a bill, I'm over bill. Um, so I can read, I can read Twio and bring you up to speed on that. Um, and so. You know, it's. It's still gonna have a few, um, tweaks to it. Um, and then we will manage it as, as we see fit.
You know, is it available coming out of the education company? Their version that's been approved. Oh, this is their version.
I brought my own copy that I presented today from that version and it matches like.
Yeah, I went on this on.
So. One of the things that, you know, I wanted to bring this up, there's another bill, it's a Senate bill. Twenty-three thirty-one, um, I sent you some information on that. Um. One of the things is, and it's not what's in the lit- in, in the bill. It's the fact that I think, in my personal opinion, not only is OSPI, but our legislature keeps trying to whittle away. I think the power of a school. Um, and it's. And I think as elected leaders, you know, our community elected us to help do all this. You know, look at curriculum and, you know, approve curriculum and how that all works. If they keep taking, you know, if. They're gonna keep taking power unless we stand up and say, no, we're elected leaders of our community in the school district. That, you know, they're just gonna keep trying to whittle that power away to where we don't have power. So a couple of things. Uh, Linden, Kennewick, Chehalis and Central Valley School Districts all did. Resolutions opposing, what's that? And Chiwila did as well, I, I know. But they've all signed on to adopt resolutions against it as, as this, as a board. Both fifty-four, sixty-two and twenty-three thirty-one. I would like to do the thing. Um, just based on the. You know, keeping the power locally and keeping it, you know, for us to do, not for the legislature to do. And so that, I guess that's my ask tonight, I don't know, hopefully it's in time. But we can, if we can get a, a resolution, alright? If we can get a resolution in next week's agenda. It would be up for a vote and then we can, granted, we're, we're late out of the education committee, but perhaps we, you know, if we get enough unified. School districts across the state. You know, maybe that would sway the vote yes or, you know, yea or nay, or whether it gets signed or not. Thoughts?
I'm a hundred, a hundred percent with you, um, I, I totally agree, I think it's getting to the point where. Um, Olympia is just treating this thing like a big blanket. Um, and you're, you're right, local school boards are elected for their local district should be. Making decisions what's best for their community and their school district, so I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you. Have a question, what's your, um. Yes, what's your solution then? What would you do if this wasn't to pass? If you were to get enough? School districts to sign on to sway the governor to not sign this into law. What's your proposed plan then? What are you gonna do to hopefully attempt to meet needs?
Well, I think Kim already mentioned that. Already doing a lot of it, right? Like I said, it's not what's in the bill and we, and you gotta get past that, it's the fact that. If they keep eroding our authority as elected board members in this school district. At some point, we're gonna have no power to do anything. You gotta put a stop to it somewhere.
I can also say, so I was on, um, CARC, it was a state committee, OSPI committee for several years and through COVID, it kind of fell apart. OSPI doesn't want to make these rules, they really don't. They believe they do, like, people that work there, they, these, these things happen. And then they, like, you see it says in here, offices, and then they get to dictate where then they have to turn around and interpret it. In the best way that they can, and then tell everybody what they're supposed to do. It's, it's, it's not like. Um, not that I think OSPI is always right or amazing or anything like that, but. They're not, they're not science, they're not going, let, oh, let us make all these, it's, it is truly legislative. Right? And what you're saying, Jason, is true, and it is a, it. The art, we're a local controlled state, so that is where that's, you know, supposed to lie, but.
So now I'm, I'm gonna try and attempt to answer your question, kind of like we do when we're in our meetings. The issue here is not what's in it, it's what it's taking away. So I'm gonna give you an example. If you're on the freeway and you drive from Washington to Idaho, the speed limit changes. You go to Montana, the speed limit changes. Speed limits are state controlled. Okay? So in the public education system. The amount of credits you need to graduate. Is a district decision, there's a baseline for the state, but it's a district decision. So. For a long time, there wasn't even a baseline. For the state level. Fifteen years.
When I, I went out longer than, it's been, yeah.
But I meant, but I mean, there wasn't a baseline and then that became it, so then, then the districts. Then it came Core twenty-four and there was these pieces that we had to do, right? So what, what they're talking about here when I'm helping you to understand this is, it's not about the topics. It's about the decision and the control. Because what works in Chiwila or what works in Prosser. Is a, is a governmental system and we have elected officials to make those decisions. And if, if the Prosser community likes or doesn't like what we're doing, then when we have elected officials, then. We change those elected officials. Right? So I don't think it's a, I don't think anyone here would say that we need to identify or support marginalized populations. Okay, but you do or don't, but it's about the control that they're taking away from what's happening in the district. Is that a?
Yeah, that's exactly right, one of the. You know, like Wazda's a, a big thing for state school directors, um, you know, their official position is local control. And. And so that's part of, you know, that's why we're more active in Wazda, that's. You know, if we get more active in this kind of stuff, we can, can, we can retain local control. Because what's good for us may not be good for. Uh, Goldendale or, uh, uh, Colville, you know, stuff like that, so we can, if we don't have the ability to locally control. What's being, you know, learned or how we learn or how many credits it takes to, to graduate. You know, eventually we're gonna have no power at all.
I, I see that, but I, maybe it's a personal thing that I have. A sense that if you have a group of people, they shouldn't be split up into. I guess I just say, I'm a communist, okay? There's that, that's, that's where my beliefs come from. I believe in a large sect of the population. And that's, that's mine, you completely disagree with me, I, that's fine. Um. But. I think that if you, if you look at this, and I do agree that taking control away from things sucks, you like having control, it's power, you're elected. With a expectation that this is what you do, but I think to. I guess. Fight it in a way, I guess, um, to. I don't know how I'm trying to word this, but it, it. It, it makes no sense in my. To try and block something that another school district won't block. You're gonna have students come from different school districts, you're gonna be more educated on topics that are included in this, or gonna have. Their school board is gonna make different decisions. On their education, when I believe that every student in Washington and across the United States should get these same. Topics, the same level of education, the same, same, same. So that way you don't have someone coming out of, say, Kennewick, who has. A better understanding of one subject than a student coming out of Pross. Or vice versa across the board.
But I need you to get off of what's in the bill. And understand that we are elected. And this is all volunteer, for the most part, right? We donate our time and energies for this school district to come up with this. You know, we were elected to do policies and, and, and so far, and look at, um. Instructional material, if they keep taking that away. Then it goes back to where you want it to be. That's, that's, and that's your opinion and I respect that. We, but I think. We, we just need to have, we need to keep local control like with Deanna said, you know, we are a local controlled state. And I think it needs to stay that way.
Think that we also.
I follow up on that, if we look at section five. So I'm gonna make sure that we understand. It says we're here, establish an instructional materials committee to be appointed with the approval of the. For, so that's line sixteen seventeen, page six. So that is referring to local control and that's what we do now. And then if we go to page seven, um, line twenty-one, I prefer that approval or disapproval shall be. At the local school district's board of directors, there are requirements the state is putting forth. But I want it to be clear to us, to everyone listening, it's not all local control being taken away. I don't want that to be the messages out there.
You're right.
Thank you.
It is, it is not all.
Yep, they're not gonna say something, this is the curriculum you're going.
You are correct.
I also, you know, in reading the. I thought about our volleyball team this fall. And what happened to them in Seela. So that was our, you know. It was just horrific and I think we all were appalled by it and no one thought that was appropriate. The Ellensburg School District is being investigated by the Department of Justice. For ten years of ignoring systematic boring of LGBTQ kids. So that's three schools in our league that we, including us. That we can see where these policies are important. So I don't think it's superfluous. Information coming, you know, out of anywhere, and we do have local control. And can say, we don't like this curriculum, it's not what's gonna work for Prosser. I do also, you know, like that women are included in this. I like that neurodivergent people are included in this. Handicap people, um, Native Americans, historically marginalized, other marginalized communities, and I think. You know, we have to think about that, but my original point is that, yes. There's, hey, you gotta do this, but it's up to you, school board, which one you're gonna, so I just think that's an important message to keep in mind.
And that language is still in the. It's still in there.
Yes, that was what I was reading, yep, so yeah.
And just, so you know, when we review curriculum, we're trying to represent all of our students and. I'm like, there's a, actually already a, a evaluation for bias, it's. Guy that I do and through the curriculum, so. It's not being, it's not being ignored.
I, I think.
And I don't think.
Sorry. I thi- I think that that explained my point better, I think that, I, I do agree that we should get to choose our curriculum. But I think that as long as the state sets out brackets, that it has to fall somewhere in between here, or this is where you have to start at. I think that that's good for every. And that's, that's my, I think Elisa better explain to that. That's, there's that.
That's really well said, Elisa. I'm curious, like, are, there's. Probably lots of bills that come forward that affect us. So why, why this one to make that stand?
I don't know if there's any other educational bills, I could be wrong, um.
I don't know.
I can only, well, I think, the, the problem is that there was what, a thousand bills submitted this, this session? Um, and this was the two that, that stood out for education.
So I'm like a hundred percent on board for local control. I don't wanna send the wrong message that we're anti-inclusion or anti, you know. People will focus on the content of why, why make us think about this film. That would be my.
I, I, I would say there's a lot of bills that go through if they have to have an entire subcommittee on education. That just shows itself how many bills go.
There's, there's a lot that Twio, if you subscribe to that. There's a laundry list of bills.
Super majority for bonds, it's being discussed this year to reduce that from sixty percent to fifty percent, super majority.
It's a big one.
There's, yeah, there's just so many that. I mean, the list is so long when we get the Twio, it's like.
Where do you start?
How much time do you have?
So I guess by consensus would be entertain having a resolution on next week's agenda.
Yeah, I.
Sure.
I would support that.
Well, it's tied, we can put it on and vote for.
Well, yeah.
Alright, next up is Avid.
Thank you again for speaking and talking to your agenda and. Sure that our remaining, next week get on the agenda, make sure we're gonna have that on there.
Yep.
Um, it's just Avid twelve again, and these fine young adults are going to just share a little bit about themselves and their. Plans for next year and their journey a little bit, and we'll go ahead, you want to?
Good evening, my name is Gonzalo Oviedo Huts, and I've been in Avid for seven years. And I have been accepted to Eastern Oregon University in Central Washington, I will be attending Eastern Oregon University. And will be pursuing a degree in marketing. Um. Some things I've appreciated from Avid is the fact of how they pushed me to take rigorous college courses while in high school, because. I didn't take a running star, so they pushed me to still take the college and high school classes and opened my eyes to that. And they helped me stay organized like a college student, feel well prepared on this next journey that I have. And also Avid was the only reason why I considered even going to college, because I didn't think it was able, I was able to, but they opened my eyes to scholarships and. Financial aid and now, that's all I'm gonna be doing this up.
Awesome, congratulations.
Eastern Oregon University, and don't say Eastern Oregon.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Ryan Castillo Valencia, I've been part of Avid for three years now. Um, I plan to pursue a career in auto body. Uh, Avid has pushed me to be a better student than I was as a freshman. Or well, before I was in Avid. And has provided a positive learning space, uh, taught me to take accountability for my own actions and to be more responsible. Um. I plan to attend Wildtech in Laramie, Wyoming, and. So go through their, uh, those never heard of.
I knew that, um, most of these young adults have started it in the element in local. And Ryan came to a top four year, so he's kinda new to the group, but has each other ready and.
I'm a university student and I have been in Avin. I plan to attend Yacko Valley College to pursue. Avin has helped me with. Being organized and. Things I didn't know about. I. Learned about the FASPA and. The direct and what indirect and direct cost.
I'm Alexis Gomez. I have been in Avin for seven years. I have been accepted into WSU Carroll College and Boise State. I don't know where I'm gonna go next year, but I hope to pursue a career in the medical field. Avin has helped me become more organized and prepared for the challenges I might face in college. Avin has also become a very strong support.
Good evening. My name is Chloe Salani and I've been a part of Avin for seven years. My plan for next year is to attend Western Governor's University. To major in elementary education with a certificate in special education. Avin has helped me prepare for college and make sure that I stay organized. Avin has also.
About it for tonight. Awesome. Just a really great group of humans. I'm like grateful every day that I get to spend my time with. With these guys and spend a great journey. So we'll be back next week with the final six and if you don't have any further questions, then.
Well, thanks for coming and and good luck in your in your futures. Thank you. Alright, so that concludes the this agenda. A regular board meeting will be next Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, right here. In the library workroom at six PM. This meeting's adjourned.